Yeah.
I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Would you please stand for the pledge and the silence of a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 22 regular board meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Dr. Lamonts?
Alright, um, I have, the high school has the Heartland Hero this month, and I have with me today Melissa Davis, and I'm gonna give a little backstory of why we brought Melissa here today. Melissa was part of an organization that started something called Loving Jefferson that originated in 2013 with the Open Heart Assembly Church. They realized they wanted to be a supporter of our community, and, um, the first place they decided to start was the schools, and I believe that they were even honored for their work with Loving Jefferson, um, uh, what year do you remember what year that was that you were honored?
Yeah.
2016. But then they decided that what they were doing wasn't necessarily enough. They wanted to go more into our community, um, and start working with other places. And they, they did a lot of things for Jefferson specifically, um, cleaning flowerbeds, painting signs, providing meals for parent teacher conferences. But with them being such a small church, they decided to reach out, um, to do more for the larger community. And they weren't sure what direction to go, but they actually, um, did it in the best way possible. They reached out and decided to actually do some training. And they got several other churches involved, and, um, they went through an organization called Rural Compassion, and it was an outreach under another outreach organization called Convoy of Hope. They approached them with the idea of training one, um, community of pastors how to tangibly show love to the whole community. And this had not been done before. The training took place in the fall of 2016, and Love Farmington was born. Um, sorry, lost my spot. Up until COVID, they would receive big box school, uh, products for nine churches, would distribute them to multiple communities like senior citizens, senior apartments, YFC, nighttime snacks, et cetera. And each church specifically adopted schools, bus barns, et cetera. Since COVID has hit, the outreach had to change a little bit, and they provided three transport trucks that Love Farmington has pulled together to distribute in different ways. Um, they refer to what they do as a labor of love from hosts of volunteers who love this community. The nine churches involved are Solid Rock Church, First Steps Church of God, Open Heart, Memorial United Methodist Church, Presbyterian Church, Christian Church, Nazarene Church, Parkland Chapel, and New Life Church. And the reason that they brought attention or that the high school noticed them is if you guys remember earlier in the school year, this organization is the one who donated boxes and boxes and boxes of produce to literally every, I believe every employee in this district. And I just remember that day watching our teachers, because it's been a rough start to a school year. Everybody was a little frazzled, and it was just such a way, a very simple, but a lot of hard work went into a way to show that people are out there and do care about our staff. And, um, that the spirit of what this organization does is, was very important to us at the high school because it's something that doesn't just reach a small group. What they're doing is for the greater good of a lot of people in our community. So that's why we thought it was, um, a good idea to present them now that they've expanded the Heartland Hero for October. Melissa is just here presenting a larger group, um, not necessarily the Heartland Hero going to her, but to Love Farmington as well. Melissa.
I just want to say, um, from Chick-fil-A, whenever they, whenever a person says thank you to the workers, they say it's my pleasure. And I can truly say with honesty, every time I organize, organize something like this, all of the churches are like, what can we do? When can we do it? And they have that attitude of it's my pleasure. So we, we enjoy giving to you guys and to our community.
Thank you.
Alright, so next, um, I have the honor of, uh, talking about our future teacher. And our future teacher for this school year is Ms. Shannon Clevey. Shannon's roots in education run very deep. Her dad was superintendent of district, of our district for years, and her mom was librarian at the high school for, at FHS as well. And we were talking earlier that Bob Webb is definitely here in spirit lecturing Shannon about wearing jeans to the board meeting.
I'm so sorry.
It's an official jeans week, you're fine. I see your dad, I'll tell you goodbye.
But in re- in reality, Shannon is still in her jeans for more today because she stayed after school to tutor a student. And that is more important to Shannon than dressing up, right? So Shannon originally came to us in 1999 where she taught social studies. She eventually went on to South Carolina where she became an administrator and even started a freshman, um, freshman center from the ground up. Got to build it, got the walls, do everything. It was an awesome experience for her. But she finally came home to her roots in 2012, and she will tell you she has not regretted the transition from administration to the classroom for even a minute. Being in the classroom is her happy place. She missed that daily contact with students and making an impact on a more personal level. This is what her colleagues say about her. And I didn't let me close up the service. Ms. Clevey leads curriculum development in her department, organizes collaboration meetings, regularly attends and seeks out additional professional development that is not required by the district, communicates and builds relationships with students from all walks of life, especially those who often feel overlooked in the academic setting, is an active member of the community, and stays up to date and involved in district-level initiatives. Another teacher said she's the epitome of a team player. Um, someone else said she genuinely cares for her students and their well-being. And then this one, my favorite, she is sassy and you better watch out when that southern twang and finger wagging comes out because she means business. Okay, so Shannon serves on our PG, PGC Committee, School Improvement Leadership Committee, ACT Committee, and has served as a mentor to new teachers multiple times over the years. But more importantly, Shannon is a voice and a leader in our school community. She leads her spe- her peers by spending extra hours on committees and making sure the teacher perspective is always heard. She does not shy away from hard work and rallies the troops when we need to focus and get the job done at FHS. She digs deep with her students and always knows their academic needs and their social emotional needs. She is continuing tradition of her family and raising her two daughters Peyton and Bryn in the Farmington School District, and works hard every day to make FHS the best it can be. I personally appreciate all of her support and leadership over the years, and I know we can always count on her to focus on every student every day. Please join me in congratulating Shannon Clevey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sweetland?
That's your always mark of all of, that's all great. So hi, I'm hard to believe that it was a short, what, was it eight, nine months ago I was standing up here talking about all the great things going on in PAT and the family that was chosen to represent the state of Missouri that was gonna go to Washington DC? And of course, our wonderful, you know, COVID got that canceled. But some good news has come out of that. I think I briefly touched base with you guys a little bit about the PDGB5 grant, which is the preschool developmental grant, four through five. And, um, we were asked to be one of four, um, four pilots in the state of Missouri last year to do this grant, and I got permission from all of this lovely people here in the room. Good news has come from that. The state got the grant. That's a $32 million federal grant. This state of Missouri got the first federal grant the state of Missouri has ever gotten with kiddos under age five. So the, the good news goes on. We, we were able to get that grant. We have three years to, to get everything that was lined out into that grant. Well, some of the leaders up at the DSSC came and talked to me and asked if we would be willing to actually be the pilot of the hub for the state here in Farmington, Missouri. And because I'm me, I'm like, sure. I have all this wonderful support Shannon and, and that, and I think Mr. Uh, Mr. Eaton, where did he go? There you go. And they're all like, okay, this is grant. Do you understand what this means? Oh, sure, no problem. And I am beginning to understand a little bit of the red tape with grants. And, um, you know, when they say that they're gonna do such and such at such and such state, it's falling a little bit behind. But I think we officially, Shannon, signed the contract, um, September 1. Is that right, when the grant actually started? So now what that means is their goal is at the end of this grant is that they're gonna have 30 hubs up and running in the state of Missouri by, um, the end of the three years. So we're up and running technically. This grant has three stages. It's the readiness stage, startup stage, and then the implementation stage. Well, we're always one stage ahead, of course, being the pilot of everybody else. So we're about ready to end our readiness stage and start our startup stage, which gets really exciting. For that to come into play, the state is the DSSC, and actually, all five state agencies are part of this grant. So I have a lot of bosses up there. A lot, lot of bosses up there. But they're working on getting a, a phone system that's gonna be one phone number that any parent that has a child under age five that wants any home visiting program resource, any information, they can call one number. They're gonna call that number, and then they're gonna be able to send it to that hub, and then the hub director is going to basically work with that family and see what's gonna be the best fit for the family with all the home visiting programs. The key is collaboration. We're gonna start working together with all home visiting programs in our area. Now, in our four counties that we'll be kind of focusing on is currently, they, they're warning me this may change, which I'm learning to be fairly flexible. It's good. But St. Gin, St. Francis, and Madison are for sure. Iron County may, they may flip iron and give to somebody else and give us Washington County. That's okay. We've got it covered. I've got friends pretty all over the place, so we're, we're good with that. Um, and at that point in time, uh, we're gonna start working with the home visiting programs. They're gonna start meeting here once a week. We're gonna collaborate together. We're gonna take all the information from the families and see what fits the family best. So we have Nurses for Newborns in this area, which they focus on health. We have great circles in this area. It's home visiting, and they focus on children that are in foster care or DFS. We have, of course, you know, my love, parents as teachers, and we focus too. We just kind of do the whole gamut of things. Um, we also have Presbyterian Home for Children here that has helped so many of our families. And then, um, last but not least, we have, who am I forgetting? Nurses for Newborns Presbyterian Home, great cir- First Steps, of course, First Steps. And, and we have a really good, close relationship with First Steps. So people have been really buzzing and working hard getting things rolling. So the very first thing that they've done is this website that Andy has showing. You can go to earlyconnectionmissouri.gov, and this is gonna be anybody, professionals, parents, can go, and it's gonna be a collaborative effort of all early childcare in the state of Missouri. So it's wonderful. We're going to, they're really revising a lot of the best practices and having people work together. But I wanted Andy to, real quickly, if you don't mind, it's a one-minute video, but this really just sums up what this hub and what this grant's gonna do. So if Andy doesn't mind to play that, I told him I'd say hit it.
We believe early learning is the critical point for children to be able to have success later in school and later in life.
Why is it so important? Because the brain is really ready to learn.
So we know that optimal brain development takes place in the context of positive and nurturing relationships and safe and predictable environments.
And so it's important that children be exposed to quality early childhood programming and families be exposed to supports. If children and families feel fully supported, they will be on a path to success.
Through their social emotional development, they're learning how to interact with peers. They're learning how to build relationships with the grownups in their lives. They're learning about their big emotions and how to manage those emotions, how to express them in productive ways. This sets a child up for future success in school and work, uh, in future relationships, all the way through adulthood.
I want to learn, show me the way.
So you'll see all the state partners there on this side too. That's the DSSC, DHSS, DSSS. Um, it has all, lists all the partners, the state partners that are gonna be taking this. The, the key thing is they don't want this to be treated like a grant that this is gonna be the end of three years, and it was great, and we're moving on. We want to show, so here's the purpose of the regional hub and what they do. I love this visual that they show of kind of how our early childcare looks right now. We're all over the place. All of our home visiting programs have advisory committees. We all have resources, and we all do it differently. We all do screenings. So what they want us to do is align all of that, and that's gonna be part of the hub's job. So in the hub, one of my goals and objectives or work as scope is to get all the home visiting and early childcare in our area to work aligned. And we're gonna have a continuous enrollment. So like when that parent enrolls their child at birth or before, it's gonna be an easy transition all the way from program to program to school. This is also gonna help our preschool programs, and they're wanting us to work really closely with, um, daycares and have the school district to work well with the daycares because, guys, we all know we have to go where the kids are, and the kids are in our daycares, right? So, so we go to where the children are, and to help the parents and just be that support for them. What do they need at this stage in their life, and we're gonna make sure we find the right fit for them to do that. So I gave you a little folder. I have, they sent me a box. Like, they said they were gonna send me a few flyers. They sent me a few hundred flyers. So this is just the flyers that will be going around. You're gonna start hearing it on a radio station. I heard it on KTJJ the other day. If you listen to any of the, um, Pandora's and stuff, you're gonna start hearing this commercial. They're targeting our area, of course, since we're the first one. And, um, anyway, and then I also put in there kind of an overview of the whole grant in there for you to look at, all the different goals. And, uh, last but not least, I think in there I put, I'll let you guys read, is the Missouri Regional Hub Model, which is actually here, and what our goals and mission, mission is here, and the purpose. But basically, they want every child to enter the school system safe, healthy, and ready to learn. So that's kind of where we're at. I don't know, somebody was supposed to pull me offstage if I'm over five minutes. I apologize. Is there, is there any questions or anything that you guys have? If you do read over the material, you can email me. Go to that website. It's in its infancy, I'm telling you right now. We just put this website up, um, maybe a month ago, and every meeting, we meet weekly. Every meeting, we're changing it. We're finding something we could do better, add to. So I don't just go on once, just kind of continuously check it out then and let me know. Thank you guys so much. I really wanted especially Shannon, Dawn, Matt, give special thanks for working patiently with me through this whole process. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
You have your informational items listed. You'll go on to John Kraft?
Yeah, he's got this.
Okay.
I'm hiding, yeah. Yeah, you can flip the next one, Andy. I've got a, a presentation to keep you on track. So no one has to pull me offstage. Um, so in the packet, there was a long range plan, right? So hopefully you got a chance to look at that, but I wanna head on a couple of things. And the first thing is just our, uh, give some credit to our district safety committee members and recognize them. Um, we started that a couple of years back. Um, down the list, we have Ryan Wadlow, Blake Stevens, Lisa Clary, Ashley Finch, Cody Compton, Jamie Lucy, Jennifer Matina, and Angie Thomas. Um, all of those individuals have done a great job taking on responsibilities for the day-to-day safety operations in the building. They're kind of the go-to in their building to make sure that if there are any issues, they try and pull this off first, and they can take it to their administrator, and then it can come to me if we need to, and we move on up the chain. So, um, you know, they, they're responsible for updating plans for their building every year, of course. So they stay uniform across, across the district. Um, and obviously, that gives us eight other individuals in the, uh, district that are kind of looking at it from the same perspective as I, and with the same importance. And hopefully, um, you know, if something happens to me, somebody can step in, and we're, we're leading that program in good shape. So, next. Um, so already kind of talked about the responsibilities. This year, the big thing that we're hitting on is, is that drill modifications. We're trying to avoid mass evacuations and sheltering of students. So we're having to be a little bit, um, creative in the way that, that we drill and the way that we get that information to students and, and make sure that we're, we're keeping as much separation as we can. Next. Um, so Updates on Crisis Go. It feels like we've been dealing with this for a long time, and, and I'll take some, a lot of responsibility for, for a little slower start than what it should have been, and then we'll blame the rest on, uh, COVID. So it really is a, a great app, and as I'm finding out, there's much more to, uh, and any of the apps that we use, and I think that's kind of across the board. Um, I, I, as I got into this, it, it kind of reminds me of when I was in seventh grade, and Mr. Hainken attested, you know, we moved into the new building, and Mr. Daniels had a, had a computer class, and I think it might have been the first computer class in the district. And, uh, we had our big one-piece, uh, Apple computers, and he was gonna teach us how to program. And it seems like we spent an eternity programming to make this rocket ship take off. And what took about five weeks of work actually turned out to be about 10 seconds of sheer joy. And that's, there's a lot of great features and a lot of, uh, things that are great about Crisis Go, but there's a lot of work that, you know, I didn't understand that, that goes into it. And there's still some bugs to be worked out. Right now, we're currently working with our critical alerts. So every, almost every, we're still working out some bugs, but before it's all said and done, all teachers will have the ability to, uh, push an alert for a medical alert, for a de-escalation. If they have a student that's, uh, escalating in their classroom and need the de-escalation team, a soft lockdown, a hard lockdown, which also goes straight to 911 call, and then Alice Response Options, which is for a full-blown intruder, and then bomb threat. Those are critical alerts that we need people responding right now. Um, what we found is, and what we've been practicing with the, with the other types of responses that we need, that maybe not, aren't, you know, if, if we have a chemical spill and we need to do a controlled evacuation, we can start that with, uh, the messaging. So we can start a response, other than the critical alerts, with the messaging feature. We can also update on the go as we're into an event and give real-time information. So it's a, the messaging is a really, uh, good feature. And the thing that I like about it, there's voice to text, and it picks up a lot more clearly than your phone, at least my phone does. Um, so I can, I can type or, you know, hit the voice to text, the microphone. It picks up my voice, and then we can send that out, or whoever's sending it out. Um, the risk assessment database, we've been talking for the last few years, we've had a modified risk, uh, database. So now we have our suicide assessments and our, our behavioral risk assessments that get housed in one place. Um, it, it, it's a great feature. It's gonna allow us to run reports and look at trends and actually manage much better. We can dump plans in. It, it, it's a really neat feature. And then, uh, the last thing up there that I wanna talk about is the anonymous tip line. So we, you know, one of the things that we've known for the last several years that, um, every, um, safety conference we go to, everything, you know, that, that we hear is you need an anonymous tip line. Of course, Missouri has the courage to report tip line. That goes to the tip line, and then to law enforcement, and then to us. Uh, but this, this is our own. Uh, so the next page, I'm gonna kind of give you a taste. So, now, parent-student education. The next, the next phase is, is rolling that out in grades five through 12. It says five through eight, but it's five through 12. We'll be watching a video in the next couple of days, and the classrooms will be holding discussion about it. And then we'll be sending out information to parents on social media, et cetera. Um, when an individual fills out, it can be a parent, a community member, it can be a student when they fill out the report, that's going to come to the building for which it's filled out, the principals, or, I'm sorry, the administrators and myself. And then, uh, that'll come by email. And then the follow-up for those reports, we have a flow chart. We know who, you know, uh, is responsible for what, but that building principal is basically doing incident command like we do on a day-to-day basis. They receive the report. I make sure we discuss, but then they, they, they make sure, if it's a social worker that needs to follow up, if it's myself that needs to follow up, we make sure that we, uh, we keep that, that, that chain of command in place. Um, so this next, I, I got it right there, uh, grades five through 12. So I'm, I'm really excited about this, and I've got a couple individuals. Uh, we'll talk more about them in a second. But Carter Klussmeyer, Kluss, Klussmeyer?
Klussmeyer.
Klussmeyer, I'm sorry. I had him in class and still can't get it right. And Parker Schindler here tonight. Um, they're part of Ms. Mays Nielsen's theater class, and, um, Mindy Southern and Christian Campbell, obviously, had a piece in this as well. Um, it's nice when you need to create a training video, and you can go to Ms. Mays Nielsen and say, hey, I need your theater students to, to put this together. And kind of gave them what I was looking for, and then she gave it to her students, and they put this, uh, video together in about a day and a half. And so we're gonna play the video real quick, and this is what's gonna be going out to five through 12.
That's why I hate chemistry, Kevin. We're always dealing with liquids. Well, if you weren't always spilling things on yourself, and this time me, I myself might like chemistry more.
Sarah, you just saw something. Kevin, we should stay out of this.
No, we shouldn't. Do you know who it was?
Well, what's he gonna do? Tell the teachers? The person already knows it's Kevin. We're not here to say her name.
Kevin and John, those are the most two basic names ever. There are plenty of people in this school named that.
Well, Sarah, I get what you're saying, but John's right. He'll find out it's me. Kevin, why are you so worried about someone vaping? I'm worried because if someone finds out that it was us, we'll all get punished for it.
Well, if you're that worried about it, you can report it anonymously. The school has a way. You can do that by protecting your identity and reporting it.
Really? How?
I'll show you. So the first thing you wanna do is go to the Farmington webpage. Click on either Students, Staff, or Parents. It doesn't matter which. Now find the picture that says Knights Tip Line, and click on the picture.
Okay, got it. Now what?
Now you just fill out the form. Make sure that you give as many details as possible.
Will do. Thanks.
No problem, Kev. And remember, you're doing the right thing.
Remember, folks, it's not enough to see something.
Right, you need to say something too.
See something, say something, and last and most important, do something. In order to make our school a better place, we must promote honesty, integrity, and accountability. So remember, see something.
Say something.
And do something when you see bad things in our school. Thank you for watching.
Yeah, so I was, I was pretty impressed. When, when I saw the title, I'm like, ah, vaping. I'm like, there's some, there's some really scary things in there. And then as I watched the video, I'm like, huh, they're smarter than I am. You know, to me, you look at that, and it's, it, the, the topic doesn't pull away from what the ultimate message is, which is about reporting. So, um, pretty excited about that. I know that from what I understand from other schools, we're probably gonna see an over, um, reporting for a while. And then, uh, once we get things worked out, it'll, we'll, we'll figure it out and, and work through it just like we do on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis with our other, uh, incidents. So if you did see the types of reports that are available, individuals can report a weapon on campus, a suicide concern, a school threat, a general safety tip, uh, drugs or alcohol on campus, abuse or neglect, and then bully reports are on there. Uh, so they just go in and they pick it out. And I'm sure if they picked the wrong one, we could still weed through and, and get to the bottom of things. So the people, the, the students that were involved, and again, they wrote it, produced it, acted and recorded. They did a great, great job. I couldn't be more impressed. But it's Carter Klussmeyer, Kirby Fletcher, Jackson Ulfle, Jenna Adams, Cage Dobson, Parker Schin, and Gracie Blais. So again, I can't, uh, say how, how grateful I am, and great job that they did. At this time, do you guys have any questions, either over the long-term plan or anything that we've talked about tonight?
You're doing an awesome job.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate, uh, your guys' support and all you, and the, the importance that we place on safety in this district. I think we're, again, well ahead of most, most districts in the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great job, guys.
If there's no other questions or concerns of the consensual items, I would entertain a motion to accept all the items 5.01 through 5.06.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss personnel pursuant to 610.021, paragraph 1, 3, 13, 14.
Second.
Back to you.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Hahn.
Yes.
Hayne.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.